Okay, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting. First order of business, I'd like them... Hey, wait a minute, who's gonna be the secretary?
There's nobody else telling me.
We haven't been trained on anything.
Huh?
Yeah. We haven't been trained on anything, so I don't know what to tell you.
I could say.
Okay.
Some of you got to, I obviously. Okay, first order of business is a motion except the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, in order to make sure everybody knows what going on, I'll read the... Find it. The standards for variances, zoning board of appeals should not recommend a variance from the regulations of this ordinance unless it shall make written findings based on evidence presented to it in each specific case that all the standards for hardships set forth below are met. The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district wherein the property is located. The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances such that the enforcement of this ordinance would result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions which are not generally found on other properties in the same zoning district. The variance, if granted, will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property. The proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property or substantially increase the congestion in public streets or increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property and improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located and will not overcrowd the land or create undue concentration of population. Now that being said, the only request for variance we have tonight is from Tommy Kiefer. Our property located at 731 Catherine Street. Okay, we need you to stand up, state your name for the record over there, and state your case, please.
Tommy Kiefer.
No, you gotta get up behind the microphone.
Over on the microphone.
Tommy Kiefer, my name, I live at 731 Catherine Street. And we... I want a variance, well, it's supposed to be two feet, but after we had it surveyed, it turns out to go to where the fence is. I got a picture.
Absolutely.
Yes, please.
Could you bring it? My daughter handles this for me here. You see where the... See where... This is the back of the house. This is... This is the driveway that we drive in, the city, the garage. You can see the garage up there. When I built a bedroom, it's got two bedrooms.
Currently.
Yeah. Right now, it's got two bedrooms. Now I wanna add a bedroom. It'll... It'll actually improve it, because if I can afford it, I'll have the whole house resided. It'll look much better. But I just wanna go to where the fence is. And with that, they thought we'd need two feet of variance, and after we had it surveyed, I'll take them over and we measured it, and it'll only take a foot variance. But all I wanna do is go...
No, wait a minute, you want a foot from the property line or...
No.
Four feet instead of two feet?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
The setback requirement is five feet, and yeah, they're requesting about four feet.
Oh, 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 I see what you mean.
A one-foot variance instead of a three-foot.
Yeah.
Okay, can I see the... Can I see that, please?
Yeah. Well, showing what the fence is, that's right over there. That lines up with the... Where the garage is on the property line.
Okay, so the property line is actually two feet to the left of the fence, looking at this picture.
Four feet to the left of the fence.
Four feet to the left of the fence, okay.
Of course, we had it surveyed, and the stake they put in is four feet from that fence.
Which is consistent.
With the yellow lining to hit the plant.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Which is pretty amazing, actually, considering the GIS is not very accurate.
We had a survey done.
It's here.
It's very accurate.
No, so they're gonna be within...
Can we see that plaque, please?
Yeah. We had the survey done, when they put the stake down. We've got four feet from that stake to where that fence is.
It's real simple.
And I don't wanna go in front of it.
I'm thinking.
Because that kinda lines up real nice with whatever thing else you put there. Now talk to all the neighbors.
I'm trying to figure out exactly where this addition is going. I'm a little confused by it.
Absolutely, please.
The people are... Is now...
The driveway is right here.
Mm-hmm.
And the garage is there, and we simply fill in this space.
Yeah, we just fill in one bit.
So how are you gonna access the garage?
So the garage is big enough, I think, where it used to go in that way, in the front up there, go that way. You're definitely behind the... It... It used to be, that was where the garage used to be from the previous owners. You could see where the door was. So we would just put the garage door in front of the house.
We... We drive in from Catherine Street instead of off of Valley Street, the driveway.
So then you would be, at some point, requesting to put in a driveway...
Right.
Off of Catherine in order to enter it from that direction.
There's nothing over there.
But you're not asking for that now?
No, I mean, we wanted to start this all alone first.
That's basically just a permit, that's...
Right, yeah, I'm just curious.
And that would make it... It would make it, doing this would make it a three-bedroom, bathroom house with...
Right.
Instead of...
It would improve, it'd improve the looks of the neighborhood.
Sure, for sure. How many square feet is the house and the garage now?
What? It's about, I think it's about nine hundred...
No.
It's around that size. Yeah, maybe somewhere around that, and I got a... I got a basement, you know, which is...
Well, how... How many square feet is the addition?
Amen, the garage is 588 square feet, and the basement is... Or the house is 919. 919.
And then how many square feet is your addition?
I don't know.
It would be roughly, if we went... If we went, it would be roughly... This, I didn't realize, anyway, if we went all the way close to the garage, it would be roughly thirty by fourteen feet, thirty by thirteen.
Whatever that is.
Yeah.
Thirty by fourteen, four hundred and twenty.
So a little less than that, I think it'd be thirty by thirteen.
That'd be nineteen hundred and twenty-seven square feet.
So all we have to do is, all we'd be doing is using one bedroom for our driveway.
Thirty by...
And we drive into the garage.
Thirteen is only three hundred.
The garage, the addition, the garage would be...
It's a... It's a... It's a garage in shape like this.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, it's a one car.
No.
And that, the other way, it'd be a...
And the lot looks like it's about thirty-six, thirty. I'm using thirty-one, which I formed.
That's okay. No, three hundred and ninety, what I said, huh?
Three ninety plus five eighty-eight plus nine nineteen gives you eighteen ninety-seven. You've got a point one-two-oh lot. So I'm just wondering if we're getting that forty percent mark.
That lot, square footage, it's five thousand sixty square feet, fifty-five by ninety-two. So what was the total square feet?
Eighteen ninety-seven, based off of a three ninety addition, five eighty-eight garage, nine nineteen home, came up to eighteen ninety-seven.
That's not over the fifty percent.
No.
Right, I mean...
Just looking at it, no.
I don't know, it doesn't seem... It seems to me like it's darn close.
No, fifty-five hundred square feet, half of it's twenties, twenty-two.
Right, no, I mean, but if you do make the yellow line of the lot, it looks like, it appears like it's like over forty percent filled.
Okay, so we got... That's why...
Thirty, thirty-four percent, thirty-three point nine.
How close are we to the adjoining house? You've got...
Do we have some kind of drawing of like what's actually getting put up?
I don't.
Not yet.
We don't have the building.
It would just be, it would just be...
Can I see that? I wrote you that one first drawing I sent you, give you, she's gonna want to add that, right?
It would, it would be the same height as the house, it wouldn't be any, it would be the same height as the house. It would just...
She's gonna be a long way from adjoining house.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, no, I don't see that, but I guess my concern is... Do we, you know, do we have something in writing what you're actually building, where it's gonna be set?
We, right now, we have... We are waiting for that.
Okay.
We're waiting for the builder to...
Yeah, right.
But, no, I don't have complaints.
Okay.
And honestly, we also wanted to wait and see what's going on.
We're not gonna get that far?
Yeah.
Absolutely, understood.
We seem to be far enough away from the adjoining.
Based on the aerial search, about fourteen feet from the house to the fence, and then from the tip of the house to the back, where the garage is, is about twenty, twenty-nine feet.
You still need me up here?
Yes, just a little bit longer.
Do you need a chair?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
So I would say if we're gonna grant them the variance, do it in final approval contingent upon the actual plans of the house. Because normally, we would have a vision of what we're approving. And we wouldn't need to have another zoning board meeting, it'd just contingent upon approval of the building official.
That makes sense.
Because you've got room to build over that, or forty by thirty, if you go farther that way, if you end up connecting it to the garage. You know, I mean, you've got a little room to move. And you wouldn't need another's, you wouldn't need another zoning variance, you know.
And we can't know until we get the builder's plans.
Right, and we can't give you specific approval without the builder's plan, so it's kinda one of those.
What he's saying, um, top of the question is, would we be able to go within five feet of the garage?
He's got...
No, he passed him down.
He said either way.
No.
What he's saying makes sense.
He give them... Hey, man, here's a plaque, that's, you need to ask for the file.
Sure.
I don't think I understood your question.
Oh, it's because you should ask, I didn't think to ask, um, could we, could the addition go within five feet where the garage is?
That's what he was just saying.
Yes.
Right up here, it's not within five feet.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think there's a problem with you connecting it to the garage in that manner.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, you wouldn't have to get another zoning variance to connect it to the garage. You know, don't go any wider, because that's kinda set.
Right.
But you can go, you could connect it to the garage if your builder says, you know, it'd be a good idea to connect it to the garage.
Wouldn't wanna go any wider, it's stupid, you know, it looks stupid.
I, I agree, I'm just saying that...
Right.
With the square footage of your lot versus the square footage of your projected structure, you've got a little room to grow it.
But only that way.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's gonna be flush with the lower end of the house, right?
Now, would it be, because the builder did say, I mean, would it need to be absolutely flush with the fountain at the house?
No.
It wouldn't.
No, he said he... He talked about going out a few, a few feet. Yeah, he, he would stay within the projected limits, of course, is a lot.
So I think our biggest concern would be that west property line.
No, 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 now you're getting, if they go south of it, they may infringe upon the...
As long as...
I'm saying south, down, down the... Yes.
As long as you're staying within that, that west property line and not building any farther south than the front of your house...
Yes.
Is what, is I think, I think what we're trying to suggest here.
Right.
And that's what we were planning on doing.
Right.
Vince?
Yeah, hi. How are you?
My favorite motion maker.
Before I do the... If the builder wants to connect to the garage, and you make it flush to the east onto Allen Street there, with the, the house there, and that's even across there, it's flush, before you would do that, I would suggest that you go to 631 East Van Buren Street. And there is a yellow and a green house there, and it is ninety-two feet along one side.
Is it going east Van Buren?
Yes, no, your house is not gonna be ninety-two feet long, although it would probably be close.
The yellow house?
Yellow house, or a green house with yellow trim.
Okay.
It's my house.
Oh, okay.
And the reason I'm telling you that is, I just want you to get an idea of what one long expanse of a house is gonna look like to you before you let a builder talk you into it.
Well, and the only thing, seeing the house, the only way you can see it, you wouldn't, like, there's the fence right here. You would see it, you see it from this way, and you see it from this way. So really, the only people that see it from this way would be the neighbors, and there would be the house there, and it would be broken, and there's the garage there. I don't even...
And I, I understand what you're saying, but keep one thing in mind, neighbors are not perpetual.
Right.
That's true.
Absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, this neighbor might not mind, but the next neighbor might be like, holy cow.
Yeah.
Well, it will...
So I think what you're insinuating is the aesthetics of what that's actually gonna look like?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, have you guys seen a drawing of what that's gonna look like, I think, is what he's suggesting to you?
And we had to work extensively to get past that. We had to do belly bands, we had to do different trim colors. We had to do different size windows.
That's just looking like a cheap hat on.
Well, his, his first house that he had got picked up and twisted by a tornado.
Yeah, so...
They had to tear it down.
That stinks.
Well, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
No, seriously, because you, just imagine, and drive through any subdivision where you have an eighth-foot fence, and it's white vinyl. And then look at ninety feet of white vinyl fence, and if you only got one or two windows in it, that's what the side of your house is gonna look like. Mayor? Okay, um... I make a motion that petitioner's request, as submitted for a two-foot variance, be amended to a one-foot variance on the west property line of said residence as described in petitioner's attachment.
Continued upon...
I forgot. Continued... Right.
Do we wanna put stipulation on how it's coming south?
Oh, yeah.
I'm asking.
Passed upon what...
Yeah, do we wanna put some kind of stipulation?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that in the declaratory language, okay. Said approval being premised upon the structure...
Final architectural.
Final architectural, structured building plans be approved by the municipal building officer, and said structure not to exceed the side of the permanent residence of, what, seven forty-one?
Oh, facing Allen Street.
Yes, I know, the address, but south-facing Allen Street.
Yeah.
What he, what the builder was talking about, he said...
Does that make sense?
It made sense to me.
Okay.
Did that make sense, or you need me to redo that?
See where the driveway is?
He's trying to write it.
Okay.
You're talking about this, are you talking about this side?
Yeah.
Okay, when he was talking about adding it, he said he probably wasn't gonna attach it to the garage. But he would come up, and he'd come up, because the lot line is up here.
No, no.
Well, wherever the post is, he said he would come up to here, and that would bring him to within the allotted, you know. And he would have a, like a little porch built down here.
Oh, that's not what we were talking, so at this point, what our approval is, is you're not going past the front of your house.
The south.
Or the side of your house.
Well...
The Allen Street.
A porch is...
He's, he was coming past it just a little bit.
Porch excluded.
Right, but porch...
Yeah, so it wouldn't be, it would, it wouldn't just be one whole thing.
So Mike, when he did talk to me, talking to him, and both of them said the same thing.
Yeah.
They said they wanted to make it look...
As big.
Aesthetically, they all said that if we bumped it out like a foot or so...
Just a little bit, it would give it some...
It would look better aesthetically, it would look better, and it would look more normal and less like a happy add-on.
Yeah, so you're... So you're looking for a variance for this house also extended...
That would look very...
Oh, it's set back.
If they went a foot or two, we would still be...
Man, there's something...
No, that's...
That's a setback from the property line, right there, eleven foot three.
So because... I'm not talking about setback from the property line to the existing structure. Is there a subdivision setback that the structures have to be so far from the street?
Yes.
Yes, has to be.
Because this is a corner lot, you have two front yards. You've got a front yard setback requirement on Catherine Street, you have a front yard setback on Allen Street.
Right.
And that setback for front yard...
Twelve percent, right?
Would be twelve percent the depth of the lot, which we said this lot is...
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
So that's nine point... Right about where it's at.
Yeah, so I wouldn't think you'd be able to...
Okay.
Come any further south.
Two feet, that'd be about it.
Well, that, that's all he was talking about.
Right, but what we're saying is it's possibly is another variance.
But sure, eleven point three.
One, two, would be eleven feet from the right-of-way, uh, which would be...
Essentially right-of-way. Twenty-three, one point four, quarter inch.
This is the...
What's three inches?
Sixty-foot right-of-way, so it'd be thirty feet plus eleven feet, so you'd have to be forty-one feet from the center of...
Allen Street.
Allen Street.
Mm-hmm.
So, or, let me look at it, eleven feet from the property line.
And it's eleven point three, now.
Okay, so it's right at...
Which is three inch, they could only move it three inches out.
Oh, well then, what we would just, we would just...
Have to be...
They're just gonna leave it.
They're gonna have to be flush with the house.
You can build steps...
Right.
Into setbacks...
Okay.
But the face of the structure cannot get in.
Okay.
Well, now we know that, for sure.
It has to be aesthetic, he was worried about having just one long, you know, look at that, he said do something to make it look, look better.
Pushing the foot the other way.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I, I mean, honestly, that would make more sense.
Pushing the foot the other way and stretching the foot farther toward the garage. Two foot.
Right, you'd have the same, same difference. That, like, you know, the builder would have some, some idea.
Yeah, make a courtyard.
Now wait a minute, they only got so much money, let's not give them too many. Okay, are you done with your declaratory language?
Yeah.
Well, does it, I forgot if it makes sense. Can we reread it?
He's right there.
I've got so far, um, variance, uh, to amend the original one-foot setback requirement...
No, it was two foot.
Or two-foot setback to one foot on the west side of the lot.
Being the south side of the house.
Being the south side of the house, approval is contingent upon structure...
Architectural...
Architectural slash building plans approved by the building official, structure not to... New structure not to project any further from the face of the existing house on the south side.
That's a motion.
You can write that slightly different, send it to me for approval. I can send it to everybody, I don't know if I have everybody's email yet. Usually, there's a time constraint, but you can't... Usually, there's a time constraint, they can't get these while on the period paper.
Thank you.
He kept one of the plaques for the final.
There's another one down here, if you want it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are everybody happy with that? I needed, I need a second.
Feel free to make modifications.
There wasn't anything else that you guys needed to add, or any thought, other thought of the builder or anything?
I actually, it's.
No. No?
Probably.
We were, we're actually most concerned about moving.
Right, that's all we wanted to do, is go with the fence, what.
Okay.
That's, you know, I don't want to go any farther. That's really all I want.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now, we are just an advisory board. We do not make the final decision. Next city council meeting, it should be next Tuesday.
Yes. One duty, I always. Find my calendar here. So next Tuesday would be the twenty-first.
They re-recommend you be here, it's not absolutely required, it's part of the mayor's business, which is toward the end of the meeting, but we have no idea how long the meetings are going. So, but they will.